Everybody, it's seven o'clock, so we'd like to be on schedule because we know your time's important. So, welcome and thank you so much for coming. It's beautiful outside, so I know everybody would prefer to be at home. But we appreciate you coming and asking questions. So, just a little bit of housekeeping, the bathrooms are outside around the corner. If you want to make an objection tonight to anything that you hear or you have concerns, the documentation is on the table. You have to be a property owner within Flynnflon and 18 to fill that out. But it has to be filled out tonight before you guys leave. If you have any questions during the presentation, please wait till the very end. And then Lynn Brown, our C E O and treasurer will be, obviously, and us as well, will answer anything that we can openly and honestly and as transparently as we can. We ask that the tone and the level stay very calm and respectful. I think we're all community members and all really want what's best for our community. And so, this in the chamber, we just want people to be respectful and kind. And so, raising our voices and disrespect is not what we're here for, nor are you guys here. So, we're giving you the space to ask us any questions that you like. I guess I should have started introducing myself. I'm Allison Dallas-Focke. I'm a councillor here at the City of Flynnflon. Tonight, Bill Hanson, Heather Richardson, and Steve Litwin couldn't make it. I will let the rest of everybody beside me introduce themselves if they'd like.
Dr. Beere, I'm George Fontaine. I'm new mayor and I'm very pleased to have my executive team presenting today. They think they have a good plan and so look forward to putting it up towards you.
Excuse me, I'm Mike Slipp, councillor. Very happy to see you all here. And this is a place to be to get the straight goods. Not Facebook, but here.
Not Facebook.
I'm Judy Eagle. I'm a councillor for your city as well and it is good to see that many people here. We had almost about this many last year, so I think that's a good thing.
Great. The one last thing that I want to note is this is just for special service levy questions. Anything about the upcoming mill rate, we will have a public hearing when we are done with our budget for the upcoming year and we will absolutely have another public hearing when it comes to the mill rate. So, this is strictly about special service levies. So, on your taxes, you'll see your mill rate tax, your special service levy tax, and then your school division tax. So, any mill rate that comes from the school division is actually set by the school division and told to us and then we provide it on the taxes. We're just kind of the middle people for the school division. So, special service levy and mill rate, two different things. So, we will discuss the mill rate when we present that. I'm not quite sure. Do you have any kind of idea?
I do. We will be talking about the proposed mill rate. Because as Allison mentioned, we have not completed our budget. But I am to the point where we can talk about proposed mill rate because of the discussion around the special service levy. So, you'll see that.
Okay, so this is Lynn Brown, our C E O, and she's going to give the presentation today.
Okay, so I also am very thrilled to see everyone here tonight because it's always critically important to me that you have an opportunity to come and ask questions. I also invite you to fill out the objection form if, once we're done our presentation, you do have an objection with regards to the special service levy. What happens with that form is we will send your objections to the municipal board and we will have those on the way to the municipal board tomorrow morning. And I make it very clear that I do invite those objections because it's critically important that your voice be heard, not only at our level, but also at the provincial level. So, if you have any questions, I'm fine with interruptions. We can ask them as we go. But sometimes what happens in my presentations is I will answer your question on the next slide. So, I might just suggest that we move it that way if your question is coming up right away. So, we will start. And the special service bylaw is a bylaw that is put forward every three years. And so, we did this in 2022. And in 2022, I talked specifically about growing our community. And so, this time, I've added building a growing community because we have become a growing community. I was talking to our taxation clerk this morning. And one of the things that we do too, when people buy and sell houses in our community is we have to process the tax certifications. And so, the tax certificates that we have processed so far, since January 1st to March 14th, are 30, which is only a two-and-a-half-month period. So, that means 30 houses have changed hands in our community. And in 2024, in the same period, we processed 19. So, we're starting to see a concrete change and growth in our community. And as I have observed, as I look around the community, I also see lots of young people that are coming and they are talking about buying houses and they are talking about moving here. And they're excited by the jobs that they have opportunities to take here. So, my goal in doing this, the special service levy, this is our, we've been doing this for about 10 years, so this is probably about the fourth time we've done this, is to try and keep our taxation system fair so that we can continue to attract that growth in those people. So, I'm going to start. Can you hear me? Okay? Everyone is okay? Okay. So, as Allison alluded to, there are two different types of taxation tools for a municipality. One of them is based on assessment. Most people are familiar with that because you look at your tax bill. You will get an assessment notice in the mail telling you that your property is assessed at a certain value. And then, what happens is when we do our taxes, as far as the mill rate is concerned, we will take your assessed value, and I do have another slide that will see this visually. We will take your assessed value and we will only assess you on 45% of that value. That's what your mill rate taxes are based on. A special service levy is a second tool in the toolbox. And what that does is it takes a cost, and I'll use snow removal as an example. So, if we've budgeted for $545,000 for snow removal cost, we have 2,923 properties on our property tax roll within our municipality. So, we would take that $545,000 and divide it by the 2,930, whatever, and each and every single property roll would be charged the same amount of money. You will also see that when we get to that slide. But that's the concept of how the special service levy works. And so, what that does is a smaller house and a larger house are charged the same on the special service levy, figuring that out. So, snow removal is a good one because everyone benefits from snow removal. Your property benefits from snow removal. The next-door neighbor's property benefits from snow removal. And it doesn't matter which house is smaller or bigger or middle-sized. You're all benefiting from the snow removal. So, to be able to take that and then have an amount that is charged equally to each and every individual helps us to stabilize taxation. Okay, I did explain this a bit, but there are some benefits to the mill rate based on assessment and some disadvantages. And so, the disadvantages are, is that if we have new families who are coming to our community, one of the things that we've done is we've decided to move forward with a $1 lot, empty lot incentive. So, you can come to us at the city. You can choose an empty lot that is anywhere in our community, within our municipal boundaries. You can purchase it for a dollar. One of the conditions is that you are required to build a house on it. You give us the plans for the house. We say, "Great, go ahead, it's all yours." And so, you build it. Currently, depending on what type of house you're building, it could cost anywhere from $250 to $350 a square foot. So, if you're going to build a 1,000-square-foot house, three-bedroom, 1,000-square-foot house, you have a couple of kids, you're husband and wife, that house could cost you $300,000. And so, if we base our taxation solely on mill rate, you will only be taxed based on the assessment of your property. So, that means that you will be taxed at a much higher level because of the value of your house. This can be a disincentive to someone who wants to purchase a house and have it affordable because taxes are a part of what you're going to have to be able to afford as you live in that house. Because we use special service levy as well, we are working to stabilize that. I'll keep explaining. The other thing is also sometimes we hear that it's a disincentive to improving your property because if you do improvements on your property and you take out a permit, there's also the likelihood that you will be reassessed and your assessed value will go up. Improvements that way, it's not large costs, but it's still an increase in your taxation based on your improvement. Okay. The special service levy, because it stabilizes that taxation and you know that you're going to be paying this much for snow removal and so it's not based on assessment. If your house is worth $300,000 and snow removal cost per your house is $100, it's going to be the same for your neighbor's house who might be worth $45,000. So, there is, there are those who then have, feel that there is a disproportionate charge to individuals who need affordable housing as well, whose houses cost less. That is a possibility. However, because of the stabilization and the ability to grow our community, the more people that we have that are purchasing those lots and building those houses, the more we can share all of our tax burden.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
How many lots have you sold at a dollar?
We just started this in the fall last year and we have, I believe we've had five different groups of people come to speak to Ted with regards to those lots. We have one that has been completely signed. We've signed the agreement and they're looking at building this summer. So, and we've only started this in the fall of last year.
And what's the timeline to be able to have that house really, really talk about?
I'm going to say two years, but, yeah, okay, good. Because I also said that to someone the other day and then I thought, well, maybe I was wrong and it was a year.
No, it has to be built within two years.
That's it. So, you have to build in two years.
Because the ideal is they're going to invest the money in two years and within that time, after that two years, they're paying taxes within to the community. So, it's a win-win for all of us, but they have to complete it within two years.
Okay, so here we have some comparison from last year. Your special service levy last year was split the same way as it is this year, but it also was a little bit different. So, I'm going to go back to the conversation I said where we had, the last special service levy bylaw was presented in 2022. The special service levy bylaw is a three-year bylaw. So, when we do the first year's projections, we have a pretty good idea because we've been working on the budget. So, we come up with the numbers. But as we go into the next two years, I usually just use a percentage increase as a projection. So, in 2023, after having two previous years of the 2022 bylaw, or in 2024, sorry, the budgeted amount for protective services was 578,396, but that was based on the previous years and only adding 1%. And that's, that's good to know because what happens is whatever is in the bylaw is only as much as I can charge to the bylaw for special service levy. So, had our protective services in 2024 turned out to actually have cost us $600,000, I would not have been able to charge that to the special service levy. I'm only allowed to charge what I have put into the bylaw itself. So, that's one of the ways that it helps to stabilize because I can't go over that as we go through those three years. And you'll see, if you took a copy of the actual bylaw off of the desk, that the 2025, 26, 27, one that I'm projecting a 1.5% increase in between years. And so, as we go forward, that special service levy is guaranteeing you that that special service cannot increase any further than what it is in your bylaw. So, the last year's, it was broken into two. It was broken into property tax roll and then business tax roll. That was the first bylaw that we did with special service levy where we had an extra piece broken out to business tax roll. What we found was that it was difficult to maintain. As I mentioned, there are very close to 3,000 property rolls in our municipality. There are only 138 businesses on that roll. And so, and it also worked out that we would have a business that owned their building and we would send them their tax bill and it would have the property tax roll on it. And then, because they were a business, we'd send them another bill and it would have the business tax roll on it. So, we were charging them twice on the same property where they had their business inside the building they owned. And so, that turned out to not work all that well. There was a lot of paperwork involved with that and a lot of those businesses filled out an off-sending grant application and then it was rebated. So, we have decided not to move forward with business tax roll this year. The total possible income from that on the whole special service levy would have been under $50,000. So, it didn't impact it that much. And so, when you see it this year, the budgeted 2025 for protective services in this case and the property tax roll, $198.05 is the portion of the survey, or of the special service levy that is attributed to protective services. And that will not be split up this year. It will be strictly based on the approximately 3,000 rolls of property.
If I can just say, when I was on the radio today and councillor Slipp and I were talking about this, that $198, if I were to just casually say it to my neighbor, "Oh, you spent $198 this year on fire protection." When we say it like that, it's $200 a year that each property is paying to have fire protection for our whole community. And when we break them all out, it's the same with snow removal and you guys will see that. So, the numbers underneath are the equivalent of that $1,000 that we're looking to raise it to.
Lynn, a quick comment. I spoke to the assessment branch by phone a couple of months ago because I was trying to get my mind straight about all things for the percentage. So, they were very specific to me about the numbers of properties in town. It was 1,860 something for R1.
Yeah.
Another number they gave me for R2, and then another number for commercial or business. And the total was just under 2,500.
I just looked at the roll that we have in our office today and it's 2,923.
So, that, as I said, I was speaking to the person who runs the taxes at the assessment. So, there's a big discrepancy there of 500. Is some of that explained away by the empty lots that are here? Are they still being taxed?
Yes, that's correct. Those are on the property tax roll. It's also explained by the fact that all of the City of Flynnflon property holdings are on that same tax roll. And all of the-
On the 2,900.
Yes, that's correct.
So, that is a little bit misleading. I'm not saying differently on purpose, but there's, the City of Flynnflon should be, really, we're looking at probably the number they gave me, which is just under 2,500 for the R1, the R2.
And the special service levy would be more.
They were very specific about it.
And the special service levy would be more.
I know. Well, we do take care of that, though. So, we charge ourselves. We charge ourselves the special service levy and the taxes. And then, at the end of the day, we end up having to write them off because we can't pay ourselves, right? Like, we're not going to charge and pay ourselves. But we track that as an expense. So, we have the revenue from the entire 2,923 properties and then we have to track the expense of the ones that are the city. However, I'm not going to argue with you, Greg.
Well, I'm just trying to clarify in my own mind because I was using this figure that is just under 2,500. So, I'm definitely not arguing. I just wanted to clarify.
I know, but I'm using the tax roll that comes from the assessment office as well and it says 2,923 and that's the tax roll that we're required to use.
So, those include empty lots, derelict buildings, and the city properties?
They include everything in this community within our municipal boundaries, including, including, I'm sorry, say that again.
So, correct me if I'm wrong, but the derelict buildings, the empty lots that are non-performing by tax, and the city properties in a different way because the taxpayers are, you say, "We pay," but that's us. So, the number of actually performing lots, R1, R2, and commercial, is just under 2,500?
No, I do not agree with you.
Well, it's not me.
No, Greg, I will talk to the assessment branch and find out where their numbers came from that they gave you because I have a printed tax roll over there.
It just, it makes it real significant the difference in when you're dividing the number. Divide a certain number.
But the difficulty is, is that we both need to know which numbers we're talking about and I'm working from the tax assessment roll that is provided to us by the tax assessment office. If we need to break down what is what, then we need to do that so that everyone understands what's R1, what's R2, what's commercial because those are part of it as well.
Some of those properties, at least in fact, maybe 500 of them are non-performing, derelict buildings and/or city properties that the taxpayer pays for are kind of in a-
But if it's a derelict building and someone else owns it, we're still charging them and we try to get the taxes on.
You're trying to charge them.
Yeah. Unfortunately, that's-
My clarification, Larry, I can ask for it later. My number, I didn't bring it up on camera.
I know, but you may not have asked the same question that I do.
True. Okay.
Okay. I've talked about snow removal, so here we are. I'm just trying to think whether I need to, I'm starting, my lips are sticking together because it's dry in here, so.
Okay, I'll go for a minute. So, as Lynn had said, of that special service levy, $545,000 is the snow removal part. So, once again, like I said, that's for every property. So, it works out to $186.64 per property. So, per homeowner is paying $186 a year for snow removal within our community. So, snow removal is pretty self-explanatory. When we get to the recreation part, there's definitely, you know, 15 things that are rolled into recreation. When it comes to snow removal, we all pretty much live here and grew up here, so we all know what snow removal is about, especially this year, which I hope helps us with fires. So, yeah, that's that part of the special service levy. So, $545,000 is that. The majority of the special service levy, to be honest, is recreation.
Right. And so, actually, I do want to just point out again what I had mentioned with regards to the fact that the special service levy doesn't allow me to change next year's levy. And so, for instance, we all know what we're dealing with right now with snow and snow removal. If we are looking at the same type of year next year or worse, there's a possibility that we might have to budget for $650,000 instead of 545. I, once again, I can't attribute that to the special service levy in 2026. Your special service levy in the bylaw is guaranteed, a maximum, actually. So, it's guaranteed as a maximum charge for special service levy.
So, what that means is it will come out of the general reserve? Like, our mill rate?
It would come out of the mill rate. That's right. That's okay. I have water here. I knew I was going to be dry after because it's dry in here. Okay, so here we have the recreation support services. The other, part of this too, is that you'll notice that the budgeted amount for 2024 seems quite a bit lower than 2025. But that was based on the 1% that was determined in the previous year, in the previous year's bylaw, right? And so, wasn't attributable to what our budgeted amount actually was in 2024, but it was all that we could use for the special service levy. And so, we do have the property tax roll, business tax roll again. Budgeted in 2025 is a little bit higher and it is net of income because, as you know, we charge for people to skate and to do certain things in our rec system. And so, we have to take that income into consideration and subtract it away from what we charge against the special service levy. So, I just wanted to give you a bit of a rundown. I know that sometimes people will wonder why they should be paying something for something that they may not use. For instance, I don't, I don't usually go to hockey games, so I'm not usually at the Whitney Forum, but I'm happy to be a part of the system that pays the taxes for it because it's a great incentive for people to come here. So, and you may not all know just exactly what's included in recreation support services. So, here are some of the things. The zoo. And I'm actually starting with the zoo because the zoo costs us about $75,000 a year to operate. And a few years ago, we were thinking that maybe the zoo wasn't utilized as well as it could be and we should shut it down. Voices in the community were very loud and we heard them and we listened and we have still a zoo which people can take their children and their grandchildren or go themselves and check out the animals and it's a service that we provide that many people enjoy. But not everyone goes to the zoo. Camp Whitney, Ball Diamonds, the library and the museum are supported by us. They have their own separate boards, but we have provided grants. Whitney Forum. Whitney Forum has cost us about $900 to $1 million a year and we support it. All of our outdoor bunks, the Uptown Curling Rink, which I know many people go to network and enjoy the company of their friendly curlers. Parks, walking trails, the campground, Rotary Wheel, Pioneer Square, Rotary Park, recreation programming such as Summer in the Parks. We also do provide small amounts of support for Blueberry Jam and Trout Festival and also includes all of the City of Flynnflon cemeteries. The Aqua Center is not mentioned here because at this point, the only little bit that I have included in the budget for the Aqua Center was some training that we will do later this year. So, that's the other thing, the special service levy for the next three years is guaranteed at a maximum. So, nothing of the operating of the Aqua Center for the next three years would be included in the special service levy.
And the community halls also.
Oh, yes, sorry. I missed that.
But that building is utilized. Our rec directors here, I'm sure Kate could attest to it, every day and especially within the arts community, that building, just like the Whitney Forum, is a staple within our community. And we feel like the Whitney Forum and the community hall are who Flynnflon is, really, arts and sports. So, that's why we feel like recreation is an integral part of our community.
Thank you. Okay, so here's-
The bus service they don't have to.
Sorry, what?
No.
Not the bus service?
No. So, here we have what we were, what last year looked like. The property tax roll was 912 and the business tax roll was 403. 2025, we are projecting $1,096.41 on the property tax roll. And that's based on the breakdowns of the three slides that we just talked about with protective services, rec support, and snow removal.
May I say something?
Okay.
Okay, on the boardwalk, due to the price of lumber and staining, we had increased, I think it was $150 or something for more. So, anyway, and David Price has been still heavy duty on it. He's seen today, he's just getting slick, he's trying, and he's not back. So, I stopped him in the hat. I'll give David credit for being a skiing club and boardwalk. He's trying to keep it going. Okay.
Thanks.
Just an FYI for you, Ron, when we do our budget presentation, we will be able to talk about the bridge on the boardwalk.
Well, we always have a little down on this and it's not as bad as it used to be, so.
Okay, so here is your impact on the various different property assessments in the City of Flynnflon. So, the top number is assessed value. The 19.57 on the left is the current 2024 mill rate. The portioned at 45%. So, the house that has a value of $60,000 is assessed, that assessment of $27,000 is 45% of the 60. So, that's what the mill rate is based on. It's not, it's based on the $27,000 value, 45% of your assessed value of your home. So, the general taxes, and this would have been your '24 tax bill, general taxes would have been $528. That's based on the mill rate. And then, the special service levy. So, across the bottom on the top blue one, those would be the taxes, approximate taxes that you would have seen on your tax bill if your house was in one of those specific categories. This is municipal taxes only and does not show the school division taxes.
So, if you're 60 to 135, 125 to 180, you're in that group? Is that it?
Well, you would be, like, if you were, let's say you were 150 and so, your number would be, would be in between the 125 and the 180. Like, you would have your own separate, unique number? Yes. Okay, so if we go down to 2025, and here, we have left the mill rate the same at 19.57, so no increase in mill rate. That is what I'm proposing at this point as I continue to finish working on the budget. I think that we're going to be able to hold the 19.57. And then, it shows, so it shows the general taxes and then it shows an $80 difference. And then, it shows, so it shows the general taxes, and then it shows an eighty-dollar difference across the board, and it works out to fifteen dollars and thirty-six cent increase per month. And so, that, if we are able to maintain, and I'm very, very confident we can maintain the nineteen point five seven mill rate and have this special service levy, that's what your taxes will look like for 2025. One of the things that I've done, because I think it's important that we also compare to communities who are in the same boat as us, they base their taxation on property roll numbers, the same as we do, and they also have the same challenges with derelict buildings and properties and, and owned property as well. And so, here we go. So, Snow Lake, the hundred and twenty-five thousand dollar property is a little bit less than us, because they are only using mill, um, mill rate. The PAW is also only using mill rate, but they have a bigger budget. Snow Lake, smaller community, has quite a bit smaller budget, so their mill rate's lower. But what happens when we get to the point where we have the families that are coming in and looking at building a brand-new house or purchasing property, then you start to see a really big difference in affordability. Even in Flimflon compared to the PAW, even at the hundred and twenty-five thousand dollar level, our affordability is, is better. So, if we took now, if we took the special service levy away from Flimflon and did the same calculations the same way as the PAW and Snow Lake, our mill rate would be forty-three point three eight. And that hundred and twenty-five thousand dollar house would be charged out at two thousand four hundred and forty dollars. The three hundred thousand dollar house would be charged out at five thousand eight hundred and fifty-six. So, the special service levy helps us to stabilize. It helps us to continue to promote ourselves as affordable to people who are coming in, and we do have those who are interested in building the three hundred thousand dollar houses as well.
When you did say the per square foot, you said two hundred and fifty, three hundred, what defines the two hundred and fifty to three hundred and fifty dollar range?
It's just a number that I got from a contractor, in terms of what would it cost.
What they would charge per square foot, but.
Yeah.
And you go by that instead of the actual cost?
No, we would go by the actual cost, I'm just using that as a projection, right?
We would go by the assessed value, after the house is built?
Right, but we would have the actual cost of the house, and then the assessment department would, would come and look at your house. You would let them know what it cost you to build it, and then they would provide us with the number. Usually what happens, when I bought my house on Queen Street, I bought it at the number that I bought it at. I told them when I purchased it as, as real estate, it's about in the hundred and sixty thousand dollar mark. And they used my purchase price as the value for that house, because that was a way that they could say, well, you paid that much for it. So, that's what the value would be, and they started there as their assessed value. And then, there's always a little bit of depreciation or appreciation, depending if you do some improvements or, and so then, each year, your assessment either goes down or up a little bit, depending on, on the property. Okay. So, these are usually some of the questions I get, not all of them, but the top three. Are my taxes going up a thousand dollars this, per year? No, they're not, they will go up the fifteen dollars and thirty-six cents per month. Is this a result of the new build for the Aqua Center? No, it is not. Why should I pay if I don't use the services? The services are vital to our community, we are dynamic, we are growing, we are vibrant, and we will continue to be so if we can provide the services that, and the availability and affordability and the jobs that people are looking for. The jobs are here, they're not going away anytime soon, so.
We shouldn't see any tax for the Aqua Center for at least three years, you're saying?
You won't see any change to the special service levy. As we, I'm gonna say that in about, what, mid-2026, Kate, we're thinking that we'll be open and running. So, you will see some effect on the mill rate. We will be very open and transparent and talk about that when we do our 2026 budgeting. In 2027, we will be open for a full year, so you'll see a little bit more through the mill rate. Once 2027 is finished, we will be at a new bylaw time. So, then, we'll be looking at if that can work into the special service levy or not. The new pool is so far on time, on budget, and we're hoping to see it completed by the end of this year, but there will be training time and some downtime in the beginning before we can open to the public, so that we're aware of how to run it. Our expectation is, we are actually, what is it, eighteen percent higher for, um.
Efficiency.
Efficiency.
Energy efficient.
Yes.
Yeah.
And also because of the sightlines, we will require less staff. And so, when the other pool was functioning, it was functioning at a five hundred thousand dollar subsidy, so that would be part that's going on, would have been on your taxes at that time. We expect that this will be three hundred thousand. Yeah.
And we're still working hard to, for, for help from the government.
Grant.
Grants, which I'm sure at some point, they'll have to.
Yes, that's right.
Have to give us and.
Someone's gonna have to cough up something.
Yeah.
We've asked and asked and asked.
Every time we meet with them, we, so hopefully that'll come.
I think they're gonna get sick of us.
The conservatives promised us ten million, and then they, they lost the election, so.
I have a couple of questions in regards to the money that's brought into the city by property taxes collected. I know at one point, they were really short-staffed by the assessors at the assessment branch. Our house is not really assessed, uh, uh, how many years? And it's probably short, like everybody else's. And I know that, I don't know if there's any way the city can go and look at houses that have been bought and sold. I've talked to Ted on numerous occasions about houses that have been sold in my area, and I know they've done major renovations, and he was not aware of it, and they've lost tax dollars. And I had a friend who sold her house last June, and I know they've gutted the hole inside of the house, and they've done like a hundred and fifty thousand dollars worth of rentals. That's lost tax dollars.
Yeah.
There's lots of it going on, so.
We had enough of it.
Yeah, and, I mean, in some way, can you really blame us for wanting to go in and get a permit and when you know your taxes are gonna go up? But, on the other hand, it's gonna increase your value if you ever do wanna sell. But, that's lost dollars, so I don't know if there's any way you thought about tackling that problem, or?
Yeah, we can't go out and assess, that isn't our jurisdiction, it is the Province Assessments Branch.
Yeah.
However, we can let them know that, you know, you might wanna take a look at this house specifically. And, and I know that there are those who do that when they feel that they've been over-assessed. And so, and sometimes, they're right, they have been over-assessed, and their property should be recognized as being listed as less. And so, then that happens, and they come to board a revision. But we can certainly let the assessment branch know, and then they can make the decision on how they want to move forward with that.
Well, I know this house in question was, had gone from a two-unit to one-unit building, and it was supposed to be forever a one-unit, and they had come in and renovated it, and there was safety concerns of the people that were upstairs in the upstairs unit. And I had talked to Ted numerous times on the fact that it was a real safety concern, because there was little kids up there with no access to ground level, there was ever a fire. And I said to him, like, he had no idea, you know, but, so, I don't know.
To this lady's point, is there a schedule for assessments? I know that I got assessed this year, which was fine, because it went down. We had a, we don't use our basement, it's anymore, but is it, do they provide?
Every so many years, they do full assessments, yes. And I believe that they may have just done something, because Assessment Office called me the other day and said that we would have different assessments in 2026.
Right, 'cause she has a great point.
Yeah, she does have a great point, and I know exactly what you're talking about.
We have to give a paper to it, like, we had a sweep, and we, hopefully, I don't wanna let people with renters. So, we came here, and we got, I got four papers three years ago.
Yeah.
But a lot of those.
procedure to Rogers.
A lot of those units are turned back into double units, and there's all kinds of people living in them, you know, so. And big renovations being done. I know the one house is like at least a hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the rentals. And that's lost revenue for the city.
It gives me.
And that's only one house that I know of.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I do have a couple more slides, I just wanna get through them, I wanna talk a little bit about some growth. In 2022, when I did this, this was the vision that I put forward. We had promised to increase fairness and taxation and community competitiveness through the special service levy, and we kept the special service levy in place for the three years, as the bylaw requires. The other thing is that we, we did reduce the number of derelict and unsafe buildings. We demolished twenty derelict houses, and we've created the one-dollar lot purchase incentives and economic development tax incentive application. We did have an efficiency study done on all services provided by the municipality, and that was completed, I think, late 2023 or 2022. And we have since taken some of the recommendations from that developed policy and created efficiencies in, in the city itself, the municipal operations. We have continued to invest in economic development initiatives, and we are increasing, seeking increasing revenue streams, including attraction of industry and people. And so, if we look into what this now, what we're going to be doing for 2025, 27, our zoning bylaw and development plan was written in 1984. The Province of Manitoba requires that those plans be looked at and updated, I believe it's at least every five years, right?
I think that's right.
And so, we have been lax in ensuring that our development plan is updated and our zoning bylaws are appropriate for how we want to grow our community. So, for instance, if we have someone come to us now with one of those one-dollar lots and, and want to build a, a tiny home, because, or a granny pod, or any of those types of things, we would actually have to have a public hearing and do a zoning bylaw amendment and a number of different things. So, the zoning bylaw pla, or the zoning plan and the, sorry, the zoning bylaws and the development plan, we are currently working with the Province of Manitoba's Development, Northern Development Team, to have the development plan rewritten, and we are working with a consultant for, to rewrite all of our zoning bylaws to develop some secondary plans. So, for instance, areas in our community where we might be able to develop more commercial or industrial or more residential areas. And so, we're doing that right now. We should have something within the next six months, we should have that to the point where we can put it in front of the province. There will be some community engagement, so if you notice that we're, we'll have things out on Facebook and in the paper, and people will be coming to you to hear your voices with regards to how you think we should move forward with our development plan for the city, for the community, as we continue to grow, and your voices will be a part of that final result that we have there. So, engage with developers and builders regarding housing and business, Market Flimflon to the World, that is in progress. We were just, we are developing a marketing strategy, our communications wonderful person is at the back. We will be working together very hard to develop that strategy, to get that out into communities, to talk about the affordability of our housing, that I've talked about. We were just in, myself and Councillor Heather Richardson, attended the planning conference in Brandon. It was attended by various developers, as well of those people who were in municipalities and planning departments. And so, we reached out and got information from four different developers who are interested in some of the things, the incentives that we've been talking about in, for this community. They are interested in the number of, providing a number of homes and opportunities for those people who are looking for employment in those places that are seeking, such as the Health Region Forum and a number of different employers as well. We work closely with provincial ministers in both provinces on health, immigration, transportation, and economic development. I'm gonna ask you to comment on the working with the ministers.
So, in the last two and a half years, we have made it a point to kind of put Flimflon in their face and on the map with the ministers at every opportunity, when we go to conference. We actually will even stay later, if we can get private meetings with them. So, when we go to conference, we only get fifteen minutes, which is not really, it's like speed dating, you pitch what you want.
For the doctor.
Yeah, exactly, exactly, so you really.
And almost as hard to get it sometimes.
Yeah, pretty, pretty much. And so, it's, it's hard to kind of get your point across, so we often will ask for, because we're traveling really far, a lot of the municipalities down there, they're driving an hour or they're right within that vicinity, where we're driving eight hours to actually have a fifteen-minute meeting. So, we will set up multiple meetings to meet with five ministers in one day to ask for private meetings, half an hour at a time. We've met with the Health Minister at least three times, we've met with the Addictions, Homelessness, and Seniors Minister at least three or four times, we've met with the Recreation Minister, we've talked to, obviously, Northern Relations, which is our direct minister that we will deal with, Minister Samar, and Minister Moses, who is Economic Development, the Immigration Minister we've met with. I could keep going down, and that's why I laughed when I said, they're gonna give us something, they're gonna get sick of us. I go there with myself and whoever, Judy, Judy's been there, Mike's been there. Mayor is usually with us, and we come with our packages, and we beg, and we've sat at the table, and to be honest with everybody, we've said, what are we doing wrong? Why have we granted three times for the pool and not been given anything? What do we need to do, like, what is the problem here? And we're pretty honest about how we've had HUD Bay be a real big incentive and providing of our economics within our community. We also, this year, down again, another three hundred thousand dollars from them. So, we're at two point six million dollars less from them. And considering we're still maintaining, and we're not, we're doing everything we can not to raise the mill rate. Pardon me?
Shares are going up.
Well, good for them.
The city should buy shares.
Yeah, good for them. Well, there's a, there's a tailings pond, so let's hope that comes to fruition, which I believe that that's happening. But I have to say, the ministers have came here as well. We've hosted the Northern Caucus with all the ministers here and all the municipalities, we've built the relationships. We have, and this is not to discredit any previous administration at all, this is not an easy position to be in. You often come in with rose-colored glasses, 'cause you don't, you don't know until you're here what's actually gonna happen. But we have met with more ministers in the last two years than they have in the last ten. So, we are doing everything to get Flimflon recognized. That is showing with two million dollar grant for the bus shelter and sidewalks and a new bus this year. We've applied for a grant, matching grant, a million, we're putting in for paving this summer, and they're planning on matching it, so that's two million in paving. We are actually making headway. The RCMP station, we have to pay for the waterworks to go into that this year, we're really proud about that. And I know that not everybody's on board about the Aqua Center, but we, there are multiple pools being built within this province right now, and I have to really give a shout-out to our team that's working on that. We are the only one, I dare I say, on time and on budget. And we planned for that twenty percent contingency, and we're not even close to that. So, we are really proud about that, and, and our team is working hard. And I'm gonna get off the soapbox, but we are doing what we can with them.
I'm gonna jump on it for a minute, and, and, sorry, Judy, and if you have concerns, come to us, but also, get in touch with your MLA.
You can't, he's not here, he sits in Winnipeg, you can't even talk to him.
Nor can we.
I'm sort of, I'm sort of leading to that, I agree totally with you. But, or, or ministers, or write to you, the premier, whatever, because we really, really battle for, for help from the government.
But I was going to say as well, I mean, the history, and we know the history of Flimflon. Flimflon has never been seen by any provincial government as a have-not.
Right.
Period, and we can chalk that up to Anglo-American, HUD Bay, whatever. But things have changed, so we've made it very clear to them, not just that HUD Bay closed October whatever, sixth, 2022, and then we were elected at the end of that month. We've made it clear to them that Flimflon is not just a little community of five thousand people. We spread across the border. We serve a total population all around us, even northeastern Saskatchewan, of twenty-two to twenty-three thousand people, in and out of here. They don't know that, they didn't know that, how would they know that? So, part of what we've done for two and a half years, and we're gonna keep doing it, is educating them about what we are really like, because they can come here and they love it here. But that doesn't mean they know what we know about our area. So, we are a regional northeastern hub, we are. And once they see us that way, they're now starting to realize, hey, you know, they're not that small, they're not that tiny, and we do need to pay attention to them. One of the last things they'll say is, meeting with the Minister of Justice was really instrumental as well. as well. We want some help from them for community service officers, safety officers. Now they know why we need them. Everybody else is getting them. It's very, it's costly, there's no doubt about that. But at the same time, that gives us the in to talk to the Minister of Justice about, what does our criminal law docket look like here? Because I know what it looks like, and I know what it looks like in the Pond Thompson. We're still pretty darn good overall. Could be better. And we do need some extra help. But that also gives us the choice here of having a direct way to meet with judges who are more than willing to meet with us as well. So that's all helpful, because it all kind of spreads the information about what we need, what we're working on, and what we're going to keep doing, and we're, we're getting noticed now.
So our budget in 2024, in whole, like in general, we budgeted for three-point-five million. Our actual was twelve-point-four. So even with the decrease from HUDB, we managed to decrease our costs while maintaining services. So our budget, our current coming up, this budget is thirteen-point-four million. And that increase is for those projects that, that I mentioned. When you get grants, you have to match them. That's the thing about grants. It's very rare you're going to get a grant where the government goes, oh, here's five million, without us having to put a percentage. So for example, that two-point-two million that we're getting for the bus shelters and sidewalks and the new bus is, I think, four-hundred-thousand, twenty percent. So our community is paying four-hundred-thousand dollars towards that. I think it's a pretty good deal, because you know, we're getting one-point-six million from them. But same with the infrastructure, it is. And so for infrastructure, same thing, we're having to dish out money to have engineering studies done for our seventeen lift stations. The water service board will not even look at us for granting until we actually spend that seventy-five, hundred thousand dollars to say, hey, this is where we're at with our infrastructure.
Here's the study.
Yeah, so we could sit here all night. I'm sorry, Lynn. We just hijacked the presentation.
We hijacked the whole.
I did that, I did that because I needed a drink of water.
We're working with the government to help us fund a lot of these projects.
But they're sick of me, just so, yeah.
What more do you have, Lynn?
That's essentially it. I just wanted to also mention that we did budget in 2025, we are budgeting for about nine-hundred-and-fifty-seven thousand dollars worth of roadwork. So that's paving, and that will be doubled if we hear back from the grant application we have in, which I just talked to the province, and they indicated that they will be letting us know very soon. I'm going to assume that they're waiting till after the end of March, when they're into their next fiscal year, but we should hear soon. That grant is actually for a couple of million dollars for roadwork for the next two to three years. So we should have some good potholes fixed.
That'd be nice.
It sure would. We all, we all agree.
Just trying to make an emotion, not emotion, but.
Go.
No, 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 I'm just saying that Snow Lake is, you know, finding lots of gold, which is good for them, they're happy about that. And then there's a few things, as you say, the tailings. Now, somebody said there's a Chinese outfit and a Japanese outfit working in the area. So I guess if they find lots, if we're going to flimflon, get a bag of rice.
They, I think, I think it's a Japanese company we're partnering with HUDB to explore.
Ten-million-dollar investment.
Yeah, in, in the area. They believe the product's there, and you just have, you know, it just doesn't go away. So they, it's got to be viable.
Transporting them by trucks, and then it goes up to Churchill, which is another situation too.
To be clear, what we're really working on here is, we were looking at a pretty dire situation when we walked in. We see it as a whole lot more hopeful now. We see ourselves as making some progress, and we see the potential for this community not to sit, not to, not to fizzle away, which was what some people were thinking a couple of years ago. We see it as increasing and as getting better. So in the meantime, part of what we're doing with all of this is trying to maintain a quality of life community, and a quality of life where people are going to want to stay here because you've committed to being here and to bring in more people who want that same thing from life. They look at us, we're at a great place, a safe place, the one most beautiful places in the world. So that's what we're working on maintaining right now. So this is the business end of keeping that going. And considering that we have lost close to twenty percent of our overall income, what we've been managing to do, and very, very carefully, so you know, I know we're tooting our horn a little bit, but we're trying to make sure that we're not going in a declining fashion, but things are getting better. So as much as we can do, you could talk about the hotel all you like, each time we see that, that's one, that's one thing. But I'm saying, the overall trajectory of the community is in the right direction right now, and everybody here has a grub stake in it, so we're trying to do our best to make that, make that better. So that's what this is all about, and that's what the conversation is about.
I, I do want to say though, this was not, we don't want to, as you said, Mayor, take this lightly. Every time we come to the table and we're jockeying the budgets, this is not an easy decision. We know we're going to have to come to the community. We are also community members. It's a hundred-and-eighty-six dollars, and I know to a lot of people that is nothing. I work with people that that is a lot of money. So I just want to say out of respect for the community that it's not a light topic, and we take it very seriously, and it wasn't an easy decision, but we're trying to keep the mill rate the same, and this was, we felt the most fair and equitable way to do that for our community. So I just wanted to acknowledge that it's not an easy decision to raise the price, and nor do we like to do it.
And, and I would say that, that we're, we're just sort of communicating other, even other outside of the special levy here, but please don't take that, take it as us tooting our own horns, and I hear you saying that. We're not really doing that. We're, we're not patting ourselves on the back. We're elected people, and we live here too. So when we're telling you like tonight, what we're doing, and the ministers, please don't take it as if we're going, oh, we're just doing such a wonderful job. It's a lot of work, but we want you to know that we're serious about it, and that's how we're going about it. So rather than say it as a council that's, you know, boasting about how, how great we are, that's, that's not the point of, of what we're telling people tonight.
It only counts if somebody else says it.
I'm just saying, we're, we're, we're not doing it for that reason. We don't have to, you know, prove why we're here. We're elected to be here. But we want you to know that we are very serious about our community and how well we think that we can do, and it's just great to have everybody here and involved too. So I just wanted to clarify that.
Something I want to say too. Like, I do appreciate everything you guys are doing, and you know what, you know, if it's under two-hundred dollars a year increase to West Retire People, that's a lot of money.
I agree.
We look at the groceries, we go in and we don't buy like we used to buy.
Yep.
We hesitate now about a few things. So there was a few of us that looked at your website and saw the management wages that were over eighty-five thousand posted in 2023, like, in 2023, which is public knowledge.
Yeah, for sure, if it's over seven-five.
For twelve people.
Yep.
Over one-million-one-hundred-and-sixty-five thousand dollars is what was spent for twelve people. When I look at some of the positions, and I'm, and because I don't know what everybody does, but some of those positions and some of the departments, it's like, geez, you know. Yeah, like in the recreation department, there's a parks and recreation director, there's a recreation administrator, and there's a recreation programming, you know? The airport has a.
We, we have cut to the referee of one of those positions, just so you're aware.
Pardon me?
We have cut one of those three positions, just so, yep.
Well, they're still on the website, you know?
Yeah.
So when I look at them, and I mean, you all know that I used to work here, so I kind of know some of those positions. And our population has actually gone down because so many of those people are reworking at Snow Lake. So you don't have the, I mean, I know that the surrounding area in Combs, there's a lot of extra people and a lot of things, but you know, one of the other places was the airport, an airport manager and an airport supervisor, you know, plus the other people that worked there, you know? So our talk was, has management looked at the economics of, of staff, management and staff, and where they could make some eligible tests?
Yes, absolutely, we did. When we did the consultant report, that was done, it was about management as well as non-management. So our union members were a part of that discussion around policy and efficiency as well. And so we have cut more than one position. We've cut a number of positions from the 2023 report, because we're in 2025 now, right? So that was about a year ago.
And there was no figures for 2024 yet.
It should be soon, we're in the midst of the audit at this point.
Yeah.
So there's a couple of things. One, we have to remain competitive with other communities, and if, including HUDB, to make sure that we have staff that are skilled and trained and can do the job as best as possible.
I understand, it's just, it's just see, when you see the wages, it's like, oh, wow, like.
If you look at the numbers now, and I haven't been retired that long, it seems to me astronomical, because I was always negotiating as a teacher, and when I see the wages that are now, I say, holy, it seems like so much money. But it is. That's just the way life is, it just goes and goes like that. But what, what Ms. Brown said was that we are having to be competitive with every other community and with every other industry. So we don't just walk up and say, well, we give you more money. We have to look at, it's all done on scales, and it's all done, like, nobody just makes up the numbers when they start paying people, you know? So, yes, it is money.
It's just the efficiency of some of those positions, and whether you can put them together, and I mean, maybe somebody makes, makes a little bit more for doing two jobs that are maybe, or one and a half jobs that's combined.
I think that's what you're saying.
That's exactly what we're doing.
Yeah.
Exactly.
It's just not recorded yet.
I worked at the airport, there's Bert Jackson and myself. Just have to understand something too.
No, no, it's okay, George, no, no.
Well, and you can't compare apples and oranges, and that's what you're doing when you're comparing those to the past, because we are unique here in what our needs are.
You're, you're right on the head.
I want you to understand that if you don't have somebody who's able to come up and do the studies, like was mentioned before, and you can't hand him reports to the government, then you can't get that nine-hundreds, nine-hundred thousands and, and in return money, because you don't have somebody there to prepare the paperwork to do it. So, you know, we have people who have good wages, and they bring back a lot back to the community from the fact that they're doing that financially, you know? We, we do. So, and some of our people are doing work that brings back more than they're paid for. But that's, that's the, you know, if you don't have the person there, then you're not going to bring it back at all. So I understand what you're saying, but I think it's all done very carefully. We don't pick up people willy-nilly, we look at the positions, and do we need them, and what will that do for us?
And are they qualified?
And are they qualified?
That's number one.
Yeah.
So yes, no, we are, I'm agreeing with you, I'm not arguing with you when I'm saying this.
Yeah, it's just, yeah, because we're finding, you know, you talk about prices going up and up and up, and soon we're going to put the pool in there, and, I mean, I'm all for the cool, because it's not that I'm going to be there twenty-four-seven, but, you know, it's an asset to the community.
Yeah.
It will bring me, you know?
I don't think you're saying anything that we haven't had around, that around the discussion. It has been a discussion since we are elected two and a half years ago, and last year we did make some changes. So I'm hoping when the audit is up in 2024, you can see, from a business perspective, it's dollars and cents, right? It's, it's revenue and cost, and if, and if we, yeah, a business will go bankrupt.
My municipal pension went up, twenty dollars.
Yeah, exactly.
That's what my municipal pension went up to, that I paid into for many, 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 many years to get it. And that was just this year. Three years in a row, they were saying there was no, no cola. Really? Really? What's twenty dollars a month going to get me?
Yeah, nothing.
Sorry, the points on, is there any more?
No, this is it for me. See, it says thank you.
Is there any more questions?
When the bear came out.
Great, great kind of question.
I know how the file bank says, so this is not meant as a powerful act, anything else, it's just a, I believe you said your budget was something like thirteen point something.
Thirteen-point-four, somewhere around.
Am I correct, Trudy, you would know the school commission budget for flimflon is eighteen point?
Yes.
Yes, it is.
This, you're running the whole town for thirteen point?
That's right.
There's only nine hours kids in the schools, I mean, I know that education.
Eight-hundred-and-fifty.
Yeah, so.
Eight-hundred-and-fifty students.
I think we may be able to figure that out of our municipal dollars.
Their mill rate was twenty-eight, twenty-nine.
So schools are, you guys are running very efficiently.
They, they do get HUDB money.
They get a portion of the HUDB grant.
A portion of the grant from us.
Speaking of, I wonder if that three-hundred thousand less that you got, going to Snow Lake now?
Your guess is good as mine.
Thanks, Greg.
It's actually based on the contract, because the contract talks about full-time or part-time.
Do you have a business in your home? Do you pay extra taxes?
No, you do have to have a home business license though.
Yeah, yeah.
But you do not pay any extra taxes for having a home-based business.
Okay. And I don't know if this makes any difference, but say, I can't remember the exact number for the budget for snow removal. So say it's five-hundred-and-fifty thousand, and we have no snow rapidly next year, does that affect anything? Like, if our budget is five-fifty, say, and we'll use two-hundred thousand, is that going to change what our special levy is? That's a good example. With three feet of water, we actually have nine feet apparently, according to.
Wow.
According to you, people who.
Well, and we're on budget.
My yards look like swimming pools, snow swimming pools, but both my yards, I've never seen that.
The official, the official wording on the special service levy that is in the legislation
is that the numbers that you see in front of you, like the whatever, hundred and nine or whatever, are maximums.
Okay.
So if it's less, I am obligated to, to reduce that special service levy with the, with the snow, though I don't.
And if it goes up next year, we're going to get.
Yeah, that's right. So it's listed as a maximum number. So if our budget for some reason went to two-hundred thousand, like, we did actually have a really low actual, that year that we had no snow. It was, yeah, that's right.
We didn't have a lot of snow, but we had a lot of fires, so.
Yeah, so we ended up in the same, in the same boat.
The city didn't pay for any firefighting.
We sure did.
Oh, absolutely, we do. And we don't get it all back from the government.
In and out of the community.
Everybody, everybody gets to have their say. I'll let the question go, please. Yeah.
Who paid for the derelict houses?
Yes.
Where was that money come from? Did you get stuff from insurance? Did people pay? Or where did that money come from?
The demo houses from general, right?
Get rid of, demolish those houses.
It's when, so there's a couple of ways to look at that. If someone has a derelict house and they still own that property, they are responsible to knock it down. If they don't knock it down, we will knock it down, and then we will charge their property. However.
And if you've charged their property, have you received payment?
Well, it goes on their tax bill. So we will receive payment, or we take the property back, and then we sell it through tax sale, and we get payment that way. However, if there are properties where they've come to us and we end up owning them because they don't get sold through the tax sale, then what we will do is, we will end up paying to knock those buildings down. And then what we then do is, we offer those lots through the one-dollar incentive, and if someone comes along, they're building a brand-new house. So at the end of the day, we're getting back money to, to cover that. It means that this year, if we knock down twenty derelict houses, there's going to be a cost. But if we can get people onto those houses, then we will have taxation as we go forward for many years.
That would definitely be lost. You're not going to get money from twenty derelict houses.
No.
Reality, reality says you're not going to see a dime.
Yeah, except for the difference is, though, is that if we knock those derelict houses down, we don't have those eyesores there, and people will buy those lots.
For sure. It's the thing to do.
And it's a safety issue too, right? People going in and squatting and kids or whatnot.
Can't sugarcoat that.
Yeah, no.
So in years going forward, like we're paying 1% this year, 1% next year, 1.5. So is this going to be increasing every single year?
It goes for, so '25, '26, '27, um, in the beginning of 2028, I have to be in front of you again. And then I, I'll let you know what our budgeting looks like. Um, and maybe I'll come to you and say, well, now this year we only need $900 for our special service levy. Or we need, um, a, a $1,102, whatever. When we do that work again, it will be in the spring of 20, or in the early winter of 2028. And you will have the opportunity to come into the same room and listen to the breakdown from what we want to put forward in 2028.
Any projections on what the pool is going to cost per year to operate?
Yeah, I'm thinking it's going to be about 300,000, which is 200,000 less than the old one was.
And our policing, does, does it go up every year? Does it?
We don't, we have no policing cost, except for the cost of the fact that they are in that building. And so our building maintenance and repair is cost that we have for the Protective Services building.
And when are they looking at building finally the new?
I believe they're going to have shovels in the ground this year.
Yeah.
I, yes, I actually wanted to say something and I forgot, but now I've remembered it. Um, I'm going to suggest to each and every one of you that once we've gotten rid of this enormous amount of snow and there's an opportunity to start roaming about in the community, that you do that. Roam about in the community. We've got UCN is, um, putting in student housing. We've got RCMP. Hopefully we'll have some of the, the starts on some of those individuals who have put their dollars down on the lots. Um, and we are hoping to hear back on the possibility of some other multifamily housing. Um, we don't know a lot yet, but we'll certainly provide that information to the community when we have more information as well. Uh, and so you may be surprised about what you see. We will be doing roadwork. Uh, we're going to be digging up Church Street again in front of the Friendship Center.
New lighting on Main Street.
That's right, new lighting on Main Street.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Church Street is going to be dug up again?
Not the whole thing, just a small piece because we have to.
Plumbing to the parking lot.
Yeah.
For the Friendship Center.
The Friendship Center will be building. But the lighting is a great thing to really talk about. So that is approximately 250,000. So all Main Street lights are being replaced. Um, the lights in front of City Hall are going to be replaced and put in our parking lot.
And on Church Street?
Pardon me?
Church Street?
Main Street, all the lights on Main Street are being changed.
Oh, well, not yet.
Church Street with the hospital was in.
No, we're not doing those lights. Um, and then lighting is being added to Rotary Park, um, as a safety factor.
Ask a question, um.
Sure, Josh.
Your residence that's being built by UCN, I just want to know, is it going to be taxed like a residential property or as a part of an educational institution? Because I know they're different.
It's multifamily. The units that they're putting in are the multifamily part of the.
So it will be taxed as residential?
Yes, it's, yes.
And can I ask for that's located?
It's.
Right across from the Whitney Park Parking Lot.
So it will be for students only then or?
That's my understanding, but that would be a question for UCN.
It's a UCN, yeah, we just have to rezone it.
That's right.
Yeah, yeah. And the RCMP, same thing, that, um, they're building it. Um, we just have to pay to get the plumbing to the, their property line and they'll start that. And that's being built where the old company apartments and cottages, right across from primary. Pardon me? I think, we haven't really locked anything down. We kind of just started that plumb conversation because I think the new build has been in talk for at least.
Ever.
Yeah, so we're hesitant to say, hey, we're going to do this until they actually, but we have confirmation that they're, and we've started our part. Um, the other day when you saw the big drills, that's what that was all about there, um, for putting in lines and stuff.
About the mine school trailers that they're supposed to be coming into?
I don't know much about that, Mr. Dodds.
Are they working on the ground or something?
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, Mrs. Green.
But there's exciting things and, and. Go ahead, sorry.
No, Mrs. Green.
I was just going to say, when you mentioned them, uh, digging up by the Friendship Center because they're, they're putting in their, uh, that housing anyway.
Yeah.
And so that parking lot is going to be gone. I'm wondering what we're going to do for parking in the uptown area.
Well, this is a huge question that everybody's been asking. So currently, right now, within that parking lot, obviously, the Friendship Center and a lot of the hospital park there as well. Uh, we're trying to work with the hospital to discuss some potential parking within the Whitney Forum. Um, Hud Bay has all that parking in the back as well. Um, we're trying to come up with a plan.
I know, but that's kind of a height for seniors if they have to park over in the, in the parking lot.
But I think most of the parking there is, is by employees, right?
It is.
And so when you're talking about people who are driving on different shifts, coming to Church Street, coming to the downtown core area, maybe a little bit of walking from back in the Hud Bay area, maybe it's going to have to happen. If you're a senior and you're coming downtown for shopping or whatever, that's a different.
Absolutely.
That, that's a different sort of thing to tackle and that's, you know.
And legitimate.
And, and that's legitimate, but I mean, if, if no one can park anywhere to shop because employees have parked up everywhere, I think there has to be, you know, some discourse back and forth about how can we do something to rectify that?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think about when the Flynnplon Hotel was up and running and, um, that parking lot was utilized a lot. So perhaps that parking lot can be utilized for better things.
Thank you for your time.
Oh, thank you, next.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Green.
Even though, or somebody did change the clock.
Yes.
Yes.
Ah, we know.
Yeah, we tried, but we're very short. Mr. Hyden?
One more, we got another question.
Excuse me, guys. Mr. Hyden?
Does a hospital pay taxes?
Does the hospital pay taxes?
I'll have to take a look at that.
Really?
We talked about this.
I'm going to say no, but I don't want to say no if I'm wrong. We don't get taxes from the hospital. But there could be portions of it that were taxing.
No, we don't. But, uh, the building, like the post office, they do a grant and they're the same thing as Hud Bay does.
That's right. So we don't really get taxes from some.
We don't get taxes. We get grant.
Yeah.
If you want in the school bank or you get the tactic?
We don't really get any.
Don't, no, no.
As well?
We don't own it. It's kind of like, uh, the old grocery store down the hill, like privately owned it. They pay their taxes then. Yeah, unfortunately, we don't.
Privately owned and they're not selling and we don't know why.
Taxes right out, Judy, because you should know that.
I wish we knew everything. Well, there you go.
Sometimes we want to know everything, right?
I mean, I'm, I'm observing.
Any other questions? I'm sure Eric, do you have questions? Okay, thanks, Eric.
You don't know how this makes us feel to have people here asking the right questions.
Once again, if you have any objections, they're going to have to be filled out, excuse me. Before you guys leave, if you have any objections, it has to be filled out tonight and left here.
Is it just objections or suggestions?
You can do either or.
Yeah, if you do suggestions, then we'll, we'll see them and we'll talk about them. If you do an actual objection, I have to send that to the court.
I will love a suggestion.